Dave, are we ready to reconvene?
Ready, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we will come out of recess and come back to our council meeting for September the 14th. We have just concluded the conduct of business and we will move on to item seven, study session. First item, receive report and provide direction regarding proposed standards for fencing and screening of construction sites and construction, storage, slash staging areas. Pretty many.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The item that is before you is discussing proposed standards for fencing and screening at construction sites. And I think members of the public and certainly members of council have seen the various staging areas around our community. And they're frankly in various stages of aesthetics. Some have well maintained constructions and others don't. And the weeds and the fences sometimes are tattered. And the reasons are many. We'll talk about that. We know that it is a concern of the council and of the community. And while we try to address the one-off situations, this is a problem that really deserves a systematic approach and a systematic relook on how they need, on what our requirements are. And so, the presentation tonight will be provided by Mike Bacalden. Mike Bacalden is an expert consultant with the Municipal Resource Group. He is assisting the city while we have an interim public director. He's undertaken a number of tasks for the center, for the city. Chief among them is conducting a formal assessment of the Public Works Department. As the city council knows, that is an effort that we've undertaken just about every time that we've had a department director transition so the new director can walk in with an outside third-party evaluation and some recommendations. But he's also been assisting staff and taken on individual projects. This being one of them, I asked Mike to take a look at our practices and policies around construction, fencing and lay-down yards and provide some recommendations. So Mike is with us tonight. He's prepared the materials that are before you. And so, with that, why don't I turn it over to Mike? I invited him to present tonight. I did not tell him that it would be nearly 10 o'clock when he went on. But he is here and I know has been waiting. So can we bring Mike in as a panelist? Looks like he's entering right now. And there's a PowerPoint that he will share with the city council. Hi, Mike.
Good evening.
And, I'm sorry, before Mike goes, I forgot to say your resume. Mike has nearly 30 years of experience in both the public and private sector. He was the Public Works Director for the City of Saliandro for eight years, as well as the Deputy General Manager and the Interim General Manager for the Deli Diablo Sanitation District. So he comes to us well in wealth of public works and white utility experience.
Great, am I on? Perfect. Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. The pleasure to be in front of you tonight regardless of the hour. So Javon gave a great introduction, so I think I'm going to jump right into the presentation. So the objective of the review was to, really the bottom line is to minimize the visual impacts of construction projects on the community. That's the overarching objective of any kind of fencing and screening standards. As part of the analysis, the goal was to really strengthen and standardize the city's existing standards for fencing. And originally, the task was to look at off-site staging areas. But as part of the analysis, we decided that, you know, why limit it to off-site staging areas? Why have a great-looking fence for an outside staging area and then have a credit-looking fence for construction, the construction site itself? So we decided to unite, so to speak, the analysis to look at all fencing for any kind of construction site, whether it be onsite storage, off-site storage, and for the construction site itself. And then part of the review is also to look at the actual process for the review and approval of construction sites. And most importantly, the oversight. Because, you know, no matter what standards you have, if the standards are not being enforced or overseen, then it doesn't really matter what kind of standards that you adopt. So as a background, the city currently regulates construction sites and staging areas through, actually, several mechanisms. The first is for the city's capital projects. The city staff, the engineering staff, prepare specifications for the city-run projects. So that's one place where there's an ability to enter in standards for projects in terms of site conditions, screening and fencing. The next is also in an engineering department. It's for encroachment permit. There's standard conditions for encroachment permits for work in the right-of-way. And that's typically work performed by the utilities. But it can also be for other types of private contractors. It's like plumbers doing work in the street, things like that. The next approval is, is conditions of approval through the planning department, you know, as part of the entitlement process or someone coming in through some kind of a planning zoning approval. And the last kind of mechanism is a building permit. So pretty much any type of building construction project's going to have to go through the city and obtain a building permit. So they may not have to go through Public Works, they may not need encroachment permit, they may not need to go through planning for conditions of approval. But, you know, virtually every construction project will at least go through the building department and obtain a building permit. And then the city has actually a fairly unique requirement. It's in the zoning code, it says that any off-site temporary storage, construction staging areas need to obtain a temporary use permit from the planning commission. So the review process consisted of several steps. But the first one was that, the first finding was, so to speak, the city does not have consistent and detailed standards for staging area and construction site, temporary fencing and screening. And the reason it's not consistent is that the planning department's conditions of approval may not mesh with exactly what the engineering department puts in their specifications, which may not match what the building department puts into their standard conditions of approval for building permits. So the idea is that we ended up with uniform language for any construction project, no matter how it was permitted or approved, whether it be through planning, through building or through engineering. The staff performed an internet search, so you could say it was an international search for standards, and reached out also to neighboring cities in San Mateo County to determine best practices and to obtain model language. So in terms of findings, many cities identify potential staging areas for public works projects prior to bid. And not only for public works projects, but even for private developers. Good examples in your area would be the city of Milbrae and the city of Burlingame. They both have somewhat remote city-owned property, you know, along the bay shore. One is along a, close to a golf course, another one is close to a water treatment plant. And so they're really out-of-the-way locations where they're able to provide contractors, whether it be for a city project or for private development, the ability to store materials in an out-of-the-way location that isn't really in the public eye. So that's a key advantage of some cities that have those types of city-owned properties where they can, they can have contractors store things out of sight. And then a few agencies actually have fairly detailed fencing and screening specifications, requirements for construction sites, but not really for off-site staging areas. We were not able to find really sites, specifications for off-site staging areas. Really, all the fencing requirements really applied to construction sites. And the vast majority of cities really had very general, generic kind of, you know, make, put up a fence, put up screening and make it look pretty. There wasn't much specific language. Whereas a few agencies had very specific standards for the type of fence and the type of screening, you know, the number of attachment points, you know, can the attachment points be visible from the street? So we actually were able to find some fairly good model language to borrow from. And last, really, one of the key findings was that the city's requirement for temporary use permit via the planning commission is highly unusual. And really, what it does for the city is that it potentially creates significant delays, costs and inefficiencies in the process. Because to go through the planning commission, it's at best a two-month process, everything goes perfectly. Whereas more realistically, it's probably closer to three-month process, which in some cases can exceed the actual, the length of time that the actual construction will be ongoing. So the actual process for just approving an off-site construction staging area may take longer than the construction project itself. What the staff found is, really, the city does have effective existing mechanisms to regulate both public and private construction projects in the right-of-way and on public and private property. So what are the proposed standards? In this particular slide, we're going to highlight, you know, some of the key findings or the key standards. It's not a complete listing of all the standards, but what we believe are the most significant ones and the ones that will provide the most improvement to appearance of construction site and staging area, fencing and screening. So for projects in the public right-of-way, the issue in the past has been that if a contractor was storing things like a pipe and for like a sewer or a pipeline project for a water system, and they were storing it on the street, the problem was that if they stored it for weeks or months on end, same location, it became a public nuisance and they were storing it in the same location, causing a nuisance for, again, for the people immediately in the immediate adjacent area of the actual staging area. So a standard that we found that existed both in Milbrae and the city of Los Altos was to limit the actual storage in the public right-of-way to the work week. In other words, you bring just enough material to complete the work for a given work week and then as, at the end of day Friday, you move the materials off-site. So there's really no storage over the week. And then, as the work progresses, you actually, the following week, you would move the staging area, you know, up the block or down to the next street. So you're constantly moving the staging area, so you're not parked in front of the same house or storing materials in front of the same house or the same group of houses, week in, week out. And then part of that new standard would be that any debris or loose material would have to be cleaned up at the end of each workday. For projects on public or private property, the construction site and staging area would be secured by chain-linked fence with bottom and top rail. And the key standard there is a top rail, because without a top rail, the fence tends to sag and then so does any kind of screening material. So that would be an additional standard to ensure the presence of a top rail. And then, more importantly, when adjacent to public right-of-way, the fence must have screening that is maintained in a taut condition, no rips or tears greater than two inches. So it provides a specific standard that a contractor has to follow in terms of the condition of the fence. In other words, it has to be taut and it can't have rips and tears and gaps that are greater than two inches. If there are tears or gaps greater than two inches, then either they have to repair or replace it within 48 hours. And this, the next condition is actually borrowed from Beverly Hills of all places, which is where, where possible, the fence is to be set back two feet from the sidewalk. And that is to allow a little bit more elbow room when there's a project right up the sidewalk. So it's kind of an aesthetic thing, but also it allows more pedestrian access around the construction site, so we're not jammed up against, right up against the sidewalk. And then all areas visible from the public right-of-way are to be maintained free of weeds and litter. And so this is just a stock photo showing what a construction or staging area fence, you know, would look like under that standard where you'd have a fence with a bottom-top rail, the material would be, you know, in good, clean condition and then also maintained taut. So you wouldn't have the material flapping around, you wouldn't have the big gaps from sagging at the top of the fence. So an additional standard for just the construction sites, not the staging areas, would be to have a sign on the fencing that provides a name and emergency contact information for the general contractor. And the sign letting would have to be large enough to be read from 10 feet away and the sign would not be allowed to extend beyond the top of the fence. Then the actual sign language and graphics would have to be pre-approved by city staff. Sorry for that. Now, the key to implementing these new standards really is to train engineering, planning, building and code enforcement staff for the new standards. Because the city does have existing standards now for cleanliness on construction sites. They're very generic, they don't provide a lot of detail. But, you know, generally, on a public works project, there will be some kind of language about maintaining a storage area or the construction site in a clean and orderly state. And then the building code and also the encroachment permit standard conditions, you know, talk about, you know, a clean site. So the idea here is to train all sites to be more aware of the need and the desire to maintain the outside of any construction site as well as off-site staging area in a clean and orderly fashion and to, you know, pay close attention to the fencing and the screening to ensure that it's not allowed to deteriorate over the life of the project. And then also, one of the efforts that staff is currently doing is to continue to search for appropriate staging areas that could be made available to contractors that are in a less visible area. You know, so currently, one of the staging areas is on the corner of San Bruno and Huntington Avenue. It's a pretty visible area, you know, it's probably not an ideal location for construction site staging. So, you know, trying to find good locations that are, you know, more out of sight and a more remote location where there won't be as much of a visual impact in a busy corridor. That's really the goal. So the staff is identifying sites and trying to, you know, see if we can obtain or at least get approval to use these sites for these types of projects. So the request to the city council, and it really is to direct staff to add the proposed construction, fencing and screening standards to the city's construction specifications, conditions of approval and encroachment and building permit conditions. And that's something that staff can do pretty much immediately. You know, a lot of those conditions are staff-driven or staff-derived anyways. So that's, those conditions can be added pretty much, you know, at the staff's discretion at any time. The main action that staff is asking the council to take is to prepare a zoning code or a zoning ordinance amendment that revises the section 12.8, 4.030 of the municipal code to remove all references to off-site construction staging areas. And staff would bring that particular amendment before the planning commission, followed by the city council. And with that, that's the end of the presentation and staff is available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much for your patience and staying with us into the evening. And thank you for your, the very detail and the research that you've done for this. With that, I'm going to open it to, first to council for questions on the presentation, please. And considering I want to be mindful of the hour too, if we can try to get them all, maybe we can do a circle around the, around for each other, then I want to open it to the public, bring it back to the council for, questions on the presentation? Okay, questions on the presentation, Vice Mayor? And then Councilmember Hamilton?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mike. It's nice to put in a face to a voice. I thank city manager for putting this in contact when I first started bringing this up to staff's attention about the problems that we were having with staging areas. And you said it yourself, the location at San Bruno Avenue and Huntington there isn't a good one, a staging area. But instead of looking back, let's look forward. So I'm okay with most of the things that you presented tonight. My concern is the enforcement of it. The city has always been able to enforce numerous contract provisions on cleanliness. And if I'm going to approve what is here tonight, I need to see more teeth in the enforcement aspect. So I know this is a study session, so I'm concerned about removing zoning of, and maybe I don't understand this fully, of how to allow the use of a property as a, as a lay-down yard. That is a pretty substantial thing to do when somebody lives next door to it. And in a residential area or next door to a residential area, it doesn't seem appropriate and it should go through a special process, which was primarily why I had an issue with the location there at San Bruno Avenue. I would also suggest that a, an inspection checklist be generated so that the person who is reviewing and inspecting the site has something to provide in writing to the person who is managing the construction site. As for locations where a lay-down yard could be used, or staging areas, Caltrain property currently is using an area as a lay-down yard there on Huntington. If staff can also ask Caltrain to the south of their lay-down yard, there is ample space. And perhaps that space could be approved to be a lay-down yard with Caltrain's permission. Because currently, Caltrain, I believe, allows the city to have their own little lay-down yard with all the construction debris and base rock and there across from the corp yard there on Huntington, near San Felipe. So I do have an objection to, I need some more clarity on our requirements on leaving construction materials on the street. Five days could be a lot of material. If a contractor decides to dump a lot of base rock all along the street, five days' worth, I'd like to see that tightened up a little bit. And if we're really going to put down that the contractor's going to clean every day at the end of the workday, then you need to spell that out by how. You need to spell that out, is there going to be a street sweeper that's going to come by? So I like the, I like the way that overall this is going, but I need to see a little more detail in it and I think for the presentation.
Also, Member Hamilton?
So like the Vice Mayor, most of my concerns had to do with enforcement, so I'll try not to repeat anything that Marty has already said. The, so I have a, I have a concern about the enforcement piece of it. Because as was mentioned, we have standards today and they're not as clearly spelled out as they are here and in this proposal, and I'm glad, I'm glad for this proposal. But I don't believe that, you know, there are clearly areas of the city that aren't, that are below even the current standards. So I'm really, I'm really concerned about the enforcement piece. So like, for example, like just bringing out an example out of the presentation, torn or ripped screening must be replaced within 48 hours. How is that measured? Does that mean that somebody is going around daily to look at all the fences to make sure they all look good? Is it going around weekly? Or is the assumption that in the course of regular work, the inspectors would be, would spot them? In which case, if regular work doesn't happen to take them into a particular area, then maybe the screening has got to be ripped for well beyond 48 hours. So those types of things that I like to see tightened up within here and spelled out a little bit better. Because, you know, we, and, you know, and I know that a lot of it has to do with staffing shortages and whatnot, but, you know, the enforcement piece often has fallen down. And we need to make sure that we're, it would be a waste. And it was probably, and Mike, you said it at the beginning of the presentation, you know, the standards are no good unless you enforce them. So that's my biggest concern here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also agree that enforcement is a huge piece of this. But I don't think it's a total waste to, you know, to have these regulations in place. And staffing is definitely an issue when it comes to enforcement across the board and it will be difficult. But I believe if we are very clear and we spell out what our expectations are, and if we have penalties that help sort of drive the point home, it's definitely better than not having anything at all in place. Hopefully, we'll have at some point enough staff to go out and do the inspections and make sure that, you know, that people are adhering to it. But, you know, oftentimes, just the threat of a fine is enough to, it gets at least some, some of the actors out there to not be bad actors and to comply. So I think this is definitely a good step in the right direction in establishing something that we can communicate to the construction community and make sure that they understand that we do have standards, that we are looking at these things and that, you know, there could be potential fines if they don't comply.
Okay, seeing no other hands up by council members, I'll just say one or two comments and we will go to public. So if the members of the public wish to speak, if you could raise your hand now. I think expectations need to be, some of this has been said, but the expectations that need to be spelt out and clear, enforcement also. So I've heard from four of us now, that enforcement is a concern. And I think penalties also, it's not to be punitive, but at the same time, I think sometimes that gets the attention and the motivation. There are areas that, I and even the Vice Mayor have walked, but I mean, you know, the Huntington, the San Bruno Avenue, those areas are things that I know we need to move forward, but we need to put in place the standards. And I do appreciate the detail of the report as well as looking into the nearby and beyond that. So with that, why don't we move to public, members of the public? And city clerk, if you could bring in our speakers?
Yes, Tim O'Brien?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. I have experienced this firsthand, you know, the construction site when they were doing the water sewer replacement and pavement of our neighborhood. And, yeah, this is a great idea. I mean, I wish it was, this was brought up a year ago or so. But anyway, I like the outcome of, you know, the job completed, the streets look great, the water's looking good, working good, sewers are working good. Anyway, so, yeah, I think the construction companies need to be accountable for keeping their areas clean. I mean, they, I mean, I've called, I've been the inspector in my, I was the inspector in my neighborhood. I mean, I was calling the number on the A-frame signs and they responded, but, you know, they just need to be held accountable to clean up their area. They leave signs up, you know, where they're not going to be doing construction. And, you know, parking is, is very valuable and it takes up, you know, those parking spaces and it impacts the neighborhood. So if they don't remove the signs, you know, like they should, you know, and they fall down and, you know, it just leaves a bad image, you know, in the neighborhood. I just don't like it. I mean, nobody likes it. So, but, yeah, if somebody could, I know the staff is challenged, but, you know, somebody needs to oversee these construction companies when they're done the day at 5:00 or so or 4:00 and just make them accountable. You know, I've seen, like I said, porta-potties left in neighborhoods next to somebody's house. That is, to me, that's very unacceptable. I mean, who knows, that could tip over or, I'm sure it smells. I mean, I'm not sure how they're serviced, but anyway. But this is a great idea. I hope it gets enforced well. But this is a great idea. Um, I hope it gets enforced well. Um, I don't know who's gonna enforce it. I'd like to know who's gonna enforce it because I know staff is challenged, the police department is co-enforcement and they're they're way understaffed and they have so many things to handle. I mean, keeping our ci- city safe is a challenge already. If this is gonna be another thing on their plate, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna really spread them out thin. I appreciate all the work the staff's done and uh on putting this presentation together. And um, I like to see the the results. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other hands up, we will then bring it back to council. Public comment time is done. Is there any? Again, this is for direction, this is not an adoption. Um, you've seen the report, I I believe between Mike and or I'm sure the city manager in regards to some of the items that have been brought up. Um, I don't know if that gives you enough direction or if you you need a little more clarity on anything specific. Uh, please, Mike.
Well, I just wanted to uh bring up a a couple of of issues and uh and maybe offer some perspective. So there's there's, I I've heard two things. One was kind of a a reticence to change the the zoning code and the other issue that was mentioned by pretty much every council member was enforcement. So uh in terms of the zoning code amendment, um you know, the reason that uh staff is requesting that that be modified is that, I mean, really, San Bruno's the only municipality that that we could find that really has that kind of a requirement. And because it's a discretionary approval, I mean, the way the way to look at it is imagine that a contractor wins a bid, whether it be a city project or or private development. And he's, and they say, you know, you he gets a notice to proceed, it gives him the thirty six days to start. So in that window, the contractor has to file an application with the city's uh zoning board for approval in which the process may actually take longer than than the time they have to start construction. And then because it's a discretionary process, there's a possibility that the that the, you know, the zoning board says no. And then are we, so the problem becomes then does the contractor now have to restart a two to three month process or or take weeks or months to find a new location and then go through the similar two to three month process to find a different location? So that's that's the kind of the practical difficulty with having a contractor whose you know, primary function is is building something and making them go through an administrative or a process where they have to get approval for something that's uh ancillary to their primary mission, which is to construct something. And that's why staff is suggesting that we create these internal standards where staff can use its discretion and judgment to approve locations and set the standards that meet the the city uh, the councils, as well as the public's needs in terms of uh you know, protecting of views and 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 keeping things looking neat. Um, and keep in mind that the standards that are being proposed today, I mean, they can be updated at any time because we're not asking to adopt them as part of the municipal code or the zoning code. So they're gonna be administrative conditions that will be added to every permit and every condition of approval that goes after related to construction, storage areas and construction sites. And so really, if if it's a matter of adding saying, hey, this isn't working well, we're not, you know, we're concerned about this, you know, maybe we need to be more specific on that. Staff can do that at at really at any time, add additional requirements, add additional specifications that clarify issues. So it's kind of a living thing that can be amended and 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 improved at any point in time in the future. Now, and on the enforcement issue, I just wanted to offer the following, is that you know, construction's a little bit different than your standard kind of uh enforcement. You know, when a police officer talks about enforcement, it's it's sort of a a one-time incident, right? They pull someone over, it's a five to ten minute interaction. Uh, code enforcement goes out typically, you know, they'll say, cut your weeds, and it's kind of a one-time situation. Construction is is more of a relationship, right? It's an ongoing process where inspector typically works with the same contractors over and over again, whether they be a city contractor working on a capital project or whether it be a a contractor, a plumber, let's say, who's constantly doing jobs in San Bruno. So it's someone they may run into on an ongoing basis throughout the year. So in terms of enforcement, it really becomes a relationship issue. It's it's making the contractor aware of the city's priorities. Uh, and so typically on a construction project, let's say, in talking to my staff, if you have a city project, you would have a pre-construction meeting and that would be the opportunity for the city staff, the project manager, the inspector to say, hey, look, the city is reemphasizing and putting a a a highlight and spotlight on 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 site conditions, on housekeeping, you know, here's our new standards on fencing. So they have an opportunity at the beginning of each project to make sure that the contractor is aware that there's a heightened sensitivity and heightened awareness of of site conditions. And then throughout the project, they can reinforce that. Um, so that's really the primary goal and the primary method of getting contractors that are, you know, work in the city and do work in the city to understand that it's become a higher priority. And even for encroachment permits, the city staff, the city inspectors tend to have pre-construction meetings, whether it be with the PG&E or or again, you know, a smaller contractor doing work in the city. So there's an opportunity at the beginning of every project to to uh to educate and to sort of get get buy-in from the contractors to to meet the city's new expectations and standards when it comes to housekeeping.
Thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanna add on to uh what Mike uh McCall did mention. Um, by saying the recommendation to remove the requirement to go to the planning commission is um also a balance between having reasonable standards that are appropriate for the aesthetics of the community that we want, but that are also that don't put additional onuses on development contractors where uh we hear so often that the requirements in doing business in San Bruno is harder in other cities, right? And so it's striking that balance between having the requirements and the practices and the and the procedures to have the aesthetics we want, but not making it harder to do business here than it is elsewhere. And you guys hear that frankly, probably just as much as me or more. Um, and with regard to the, will there be additional training of staff? Uh, absolutely. I mean, we are proffering this new system and that comes with sort of a reification of our staff, creating those consistent uh patterns and uh as Mike mentioned, those pre-construction or 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 pre-encroachment meetings where 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 we set that tone and have a a heightened focus uh on this, knowing that it is it is a an interest of of the of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Um, any final comments from uh council on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I think uh we've given um a lot of food for thought and I appreciate uh the feedback from our comments by both the bo- both of you. Thank you and thank you for the report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So for the for for, we're talking about striking, and I'm looking it up right now, twelve point eight four zero three zero temporary uses. Is that what the direction is that this council is agreeing to? Because I'm not.
It would go to the planning commission to ask for a vote. We're not voting on it.
Okay, just wanted to find out what, to be clear, so you're gonna take this proposal to the planning commission?
Yeah.
City hall, I mean, city manager, I'm sorry.
Yes, if we have majority of support tonight to move forward with the recommendations, we would then begin the process of implementing those and uh and and as was mentioned in the PowerPoint, yes, it would be to go to the planning commission first uh and then uh bring it back to the city council as well as developing all the other internal standards. Uh, but but if there's not majority support right now uh to do that, then there's there's no sense of doing that work to go to the planning commission. Uh, if when we get to the city council, there's not um support. So we we wouldn't need uh to know that there's at least majority support uh on the city council to move down that path of um drafting the amendments to the municipal code, putting them before the planning commission and then bringing it to the city council.
Did I answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Sure. I'm 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 not ready yet to 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 get rid of the uh temporary use. So um
Okay.
I'll just share that now, the way it currently is proposed. There's reasons and and San Bruno does a lot of things unique uniquely, right? Um, so the point of this being to protect residents from a lay down yard next door. And and it it has worked in the past. It takes more work, yes. But it was used to when when um we were doing all the work and and the rebuilding the the constr- um and Crestmore. We we identify gotta use permit. It's been used many times. And I think that's a really big jump. When we know there's a big construction project, which is gonna come next as we proceed with our water and sewer, staff can identify where where that location should be. And the 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 past, I I don't wanna dwell on the past, but what I've seen in the past, it's I'm having a hard time saying yes to this. So I'm sharing that now.
You're you're saying saying yes to not everything, you're saying yes to this this item you've run up.
This 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 one item and and we gave some some feedback to staff. They're gonna, this is a study session, so they can go back. I can, I'll be happy to send additional uh questions as as if if need be. But I think this still needs some work. And and let me tell you, if you're living right next door to it, and and I can tell you, there was there was improvement as during this last phase of the water and the sewer. There was some improvement, but it 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 was pretty nasty in 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 some neighborhoods in the past couple of years as we were doing construction. And um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Other final comments or uh council member Salazar? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um not not to uh you know, dispute the vice mayor's concerns, but um, you know, I I agree that there have been situations where enforcement has become a problem uh with with uh temporary staging areas. But I don't recall ever having vigorous debate about approving a temporary use for them. So the only thing that would change by eliminating that is that it would no longer go before the planning commission and the council to approve it. But I believe that the enforcement of standards, uh which is where we've seen the problem, would be something that we are, you know, that's what we're trying to address, but I don't think that would be exacerbated or circumvented by um you know, this this change where the the council and the planning commission have to approve that use. So um you know, a lot, the the problems seem to happen after, not not uh because we approved it, but because um, you know, construction companies get sloppy. So I I have less of an issue with uh with exploring that path and and I I I think it might be worthwhile if it does help streamline um as as the city manager pointed out, uh a cumbersome project that uh causes delays to construction.
Other comments from council? Okay, um I I would, for myself, I'd kind of echo a little bit of council member Salazar. I think it is, once it's established and it's about enforcement and maintaining those expectations. Um, I don't, I do wanna, I don't wanna have something hampered and streamlining is better because, yes, we do here. Um, it takes a lot to go through processes and the timing and and stuff like that, but uh any other comments from council? Okay, so s- city manager in on, um, is there anything else that you need or you want clarity on from for direction from this council?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing. Sorry, I apologize.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Um, if we're gonna be looking at municipal code allowing, or I don't know if it's allowed, but having uh toilets left by a contractor, they should be removed every day. Um, they they do make them with wheels, they they're on a trailer and um they should be removed every day. They shouldn't be allowed overnight. They shouldn't be allowed over the weekends, which which uh we shouldn't take that hard to to make that change, but if we're gonna do some changes uh related to construction, I think that would be important.
Yes, city manager?
Yeah, so uh I just wanted to make sure that we had um majority council support to to move forward. I believe we do, but I just wanna confirm that. Um, but with regard to the uh latest um uh item that council member Medina brought up, um I think we need to do uh significantly um a- additional further research on that. Um, absolutely true, they they do make uh port- portable toilets on on trailers. Um, my um experience is that cities do allow those uh to be outside of job sites and it's not just major uh construction companies, this that's a requirement for uh for for homeowners uh at times and I and I I know that sometimes homeowners, uh certainly during COVID nineteen, uh uh had had work done and actually decided to invest in a porta potty uh because um it it avoided having um of people uh coming to their home and so um while while, you know, I I know we're thinking of large con- large uh contractors and big projects, but uh it may have an unintended con- consequence if we uh have a a blanket rule uh that requires uh porta potties uh for at construction sites to be removed every day. Uh, that that's not going
If I can clarify, city manager Grogan.
Yes.
It's not for like construction sites. This is for when a contractor brings a porta potty and sometimes they're on wheels, sometimes they put it on the corner. Um, but they're not allowed to be on the corner and and just need to make sure we specify that if when you are required, because you are required for motion to to have toilet facilities along the const- construction site, that it has to be removed every day. So I'll let staff, that's my, that's my feedback. Um, you heard it from a resident. There was, there was a porta potty that stayed in place for weeks on one of the construction projects. So um just look into it, please.
Okay, so I think what the city manager's asked is if is there a concurrence, a majority of the council that wants us to proceed? Obviously, they've heard uh some of our comments. Uh, I think Mr. Hamilton voted, I mean, they nodded yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. I, that's one. Are there others? There's two. Mr. Salazar.
So so the record uh will do, uh and we will uh also look into the the issue of um uh toilets um that are uh located at job sites and how that can uh can um how those rules a- apply uniformly to uh construction sites and contractors and homeowners and et cetera.
Well, it's in the public right of way. Is it, is it, is it, is a more defined piece that I'm um interested in. At a construction site, it's, they're always required, they're always there. But if you're bringing a toilet and you're gonna leave it in front of somebody's house over the weekend, that shouldn't be allowed. If you brought it there on wheels, you should remove it every 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 time. So it it's not, it's not as big as of a request as it sounds like is being understood.
Through the mayor, if
Yes.
If I can help clarify, Marty, I think what you're saying is that portable toilets cannot be left in the public, should not be left in the public right of way overnight or on the weekends. And when you talk about removing them, you're not talking about taking them out of San Bruno, you're talking about putting them behind the fence in the construction site. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, because even I didn't understand that.
Okay, I apologize.
No, it's all right.
Okay, thanks.
Could be the hour. Um, thank you, Tom. I mean, thank you, council member Hamilton. Um, okay, um, city manager, I think you have the direction and